Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Those of you that aren't standing, we please rise to a place where you can lay.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do not have a loudspeaker system, so if you want to hear something, you're gonna have to keep quiet. You know, that's all I can tell you. Moving on. There are agendas, there's still a couple up here yet, and some in the back. Anybody wants one? The next item is the approval of the agenda with one addition under correspondence. Item A, direct cross.
If there's no other additions or amendments, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Would it be supported to approve the agenda as amended? Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approved of the minutes for the meeting of May the 9th. I'll support. Would it be supported to approve the minutes for the May 9th meeting? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the financial report.
We began the month with $196,917.85. We took in receipts of $86,899. And we made disbursements in the amount of $24,098.90. Leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $259,717.95.
Would you like to make a motion to accept the financial report as submitted? Would it be supported to accept the financial report as submitted? Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item on our new business. A is the property and liability insurance renewal.
Right, give them.
Oh, sorry. I had a problem. Okay, we just added it to the agenda. Uh, we just got this a couple days ago, that on July 6th, the Lenox EMS and the American Red Cross are gonna have a blood drive that's gonna be at the Lenox Township offices from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That's July 6th, Lenox offices. Now, moving on. New business, item A, property liability insurance renewal. Uh, in the information I gave you, basically, the premium went up approximately 3%. Premium for the insurance is $5,910. State mandates that we have bonding. Total bonding comes to $400. And there's terrorism coverage, which we have not included the last couple of years. So you need to make a decision on that. It's $134 if you want it, and it's...
Do we need terrorism insurance?
No.
You don't need it until you need it.
Well, when we looked into terrorism, here's what happened.
Some people here that kind of can handle their own well.
Yeah.
I wasn't gonna say it, but there's a lot of cons, I'm sure.
But something has to happen. Then the county sheriff has to determine it was a terrorist act. Then it has to go to land scene, and they have to determine it was a terrorist act. Then it has to go to Washington DC, and the Secretary of Homeland Security has to determine it's a terrorist act. And then your terrorist insurance premium. So, we have not included that the last couple of years. Need a motion, folks? Any votes?
Um, in the amount of $5,900.
Oh my god, you're talking...
$10.
And?
And $400 for the bonds.
And I'll support that.
Would it be supported to approve the insurance premium and bonds? And if, in your motion, also is to exclude the terrorist act. And to exclude the terrorists. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, no vote, call a vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, uh, we have a property owner, Mr. Franz, who's over on St. Clair Highway. His family's lived there about 50 years. The house is about 100 years old. And apparently, his septic tank is about two feet on our property. And, uh, he wants to sell the house. So I did call our attorney, and he said it would be a simple matter to give him a limited underground easement for 10 feet. Which really would have no negative aspect on us, because all our setbacks were dealt with in the type of 15 or 30. Uh, so, I had Mr. Franz through the letter, and I knew we were gonna have a full house tonight, and I didn't want to make him sit here. And, uh, you have this letter in your packet, so I guess I would need the board direction to, uh, have the attorney draw this up. And you'll get a chance to review it and have final approval. When that's done, Mr. Franz has offered to pay all our costs, all our costs is anything. And I support doing it.
And I support.
Uh, support. Would it be supported? Move ahead with the easement agreements for Mr. Franz. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, moving on. Old business. Item A, Mrs. Debbie Osborne, the ORV ordinance, we're just gonna touch a couple quick topics here, and then we'll get right into it. Uh, number one, anybody that's here can speak. Doesn't matter whether you signed in or not, you can still speak. But I am gonna ask that you do it one at a time, to keep things ordered. Uh, we ask that you give us your name, but if you don't want to give us your name, don't give us your name.
There are kids here too, so keep the language clean.
Okay, since, uh, Ms. Osborne asked to be on the agenda, we'll let her go first. Uh, when she is done, anybody that wishes to speak, raise their hand, they'll be recognized by me, and you can get your shot to speak. Just remember that, you know, if more than one speaks at a time, nobody's gonna hear anything. Uh, and, I guess that's it, just be civil. Do you want to give a basis for our, um, our action? Yeah. Okay. Uh, just be civil. Okay, everybody in here, we're up here anyways, a township resident, and nobody's telling anybody. Uh, you can disagree with board action, that's your rights, but it doesn't mean you have to accuse anybody personally of anything.
Well, Billy, who started it, though?
Well...
Who started it?
Your hand's not up yet, Ed.
Right.
Oh, okay. That's what I want to know.
You can't.
Oh, gotta raise your hand.
He's going first.
Okay, go ahead, Debbie.
Hang on, Debbie. Okay.
That's what I'd like to know, you know?
Basically...
It's easy to figure out, just say.
Yes.
Yeah, you won't say.
Do you understand the one at a time?
Yeah, okay.
Where you get recognized?
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Okay, we're making progress, then. Uh, the state changed the law in 13. Uh, the county in 14 tried to approve it, uh, and they didn't have the votes from the districts. At that time, our board had a resolution opposing. So it went from 14 to 16. Last year, the county board did approve it. And we told them we still objected to it. In their ordinance, it says that as a township or municipality, you can opt out of the ordinance. And in a nutshell, what we wanted and what we did, we put it back to the same law that's been in effect for 50 years. It's the same law that was in effect when all you guys bought your ORVs. It's the same, it's the same law unless you bought your RV in the last eight months. It's the same law that was in effect when you've been riding on the roads for 20 years. It's not gonna change. The police didn't enforce it then. I have no reason to believe they're gonna change their enforcement patterns, and, uh...
You don't put that in writing?
No, I'm not a police officer.
Well, why are you saying that, Billy?
Why am I saying that? Because it was against the law for the last 50 years, didn't the police? Did the police?
But why are you enforcing it in Casco Township?
One more time!
Let the supervisor finish.
When we get done, we'll get to Ms. Osborne.
Okay.
Eventually, it'll get to you. And we'll all listen breathlessly for what you're gonna tell us.
But you ain't telling me that, Billy.
Apparently not, and I'm not surprised.
Yeah.
But, hold on. So basically, it's the same law, and you know you guys all been riding for years and years, and the police are not bothering you. Okay? So I don't see where it's a big hardship. Uh, there's some negatives to it. You're allowing ORVs on paved roads. I think that's a safety hazard. You're allowing somewhere, and I'm estimating, between 500 and 1,000 vehicles, because I'm assuming there's that many in Casco Township, that were never designed or built to be on a road. So now you're elevating them to the same... Hang on. You guys have a chance to speak. I'm just telling you what I think. You're elevating them to the same level as a car pickup that was designed to be on the road, and has all the safety features, insurance plates and everything. So now you're telling us that they're both the same, the same legal value on the road. I don't think that's, I don't think that's right, and that's why I oppose it. So, doesn't matter if there's 100 or 1,000. Anyway...
Billy, you're all wet. You're all wet.
Hey, hey, guys, let them talk, so we can get out of the meeting. Just let them talk.
Yeah, I got the air on low, but it's still gonna get warm in here.
It's gonna get real warm.
You can't control yourself, that's the problem. Anyway, so that's kind of the way we're coming from. Uh, it worked for 50 years, and I think it's a safety hazard.
Mr. Room F, I just wonder, what's next? I mean, are we gonna tell people they can't ride their horses?
No, wait.
Off the outside of the road?
Hang on, wait, you get your time, your chance. I'm just already trying to order the Ms. Osborne's. Go ahead. Joe Stevens wants to...
Oh yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, one of the big things, Casco Township, we do not have a full-time police force. We do not have a full-time, um, road patrol. We share one deputy, uh, Sheriff Deputy's car, I think, between four townships for like 18 hours a day. In order to have an ORV ordinance, you need to enforce it. Without an ability to enforce it, it's kind of a moot point for us, though.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We gotta...
Hang on, hang on.
It makes no sense the other way, too. Okay.
If your telephone's okay, just don't worry about the police, is what you're saying. Everybody, please, please be quiet, so this Debbie can speak.
Okay, I guess we're ready.
And we can... First of all, I'd like to thank the board for allowing us to get on the agenda for this issue. And, um, we're just gathering here as one common cause, basically, and we're just asking that the board reconsider not adopting this ordinance 56, after the county has allowed us to enjoy the opportunity to ride our ORVs on the road, our golf carts, you know, motorcycles. They gave us that option in 2015. Yes, Bill, it was an active for 50 years, there weren't ORVs 50 years ago, there were motorcycles, but there were three-wheelers 25 years ago. So, this, we're in 2017, everybody has gone out and purchased items that are very safe for families. There's families that have ridden up here on golf carts and, you know, $30,000 pieces of equipment, more than some of us pay for our cars. And they're very safe pieces of equipment to ride on, and they're all by, you know, there's laws that St. Clair County put in with Resolution 1625, saying you have to abide by these laws. And so, um, when I, when I spoke to Mr. Rushing, he indicated this is the first step, that we're just kindly come and ask the board that you guys reconsider not adopting this ordinance that will go into effect on Saturday.
Thank you.
Yeah, as people here, we elected you, our taxes pay your salaries, we're asking for you to listen to our voice, the people. You, you have a new generation of people that are buying your property here and, and watching and building, and they like to ride. I, I just personally bought a place up north. My first question and criteria was, can I ride my machine to the trailhead from my cabin? If I can't, I'm not buying in your township. I mean, that is something I've heard numerous people state here. Social media's been a great avenue for getting everybody here. A common statement was, "Well, if I moved out here, I'm not gonna buy, I'm not gonna build, I enjoy doing this." There's an individual that has, um, a disabled son, um, that on the weekends, that's his pastime, he gets to go in the golf cart up and down the road. You gonna take that away from him? Yes. It hasn't been a law 50 years. So are you saying as a board member to say, "Go ahead and violate the law"? We're teaching our young folks that? Go ahead and do it anyways? They're not gonna bother you? So why, we're just asking, why even go through the trouble of making it illegal for us to enjoy something that the county has given us? They followed St. Elate County, they did it, it worked for them. St. Clair County decided to do it also. Fort Gratchit was gonna opt out, just like Casco, but they said, "Go ahead and let it, they're gonna try it." There's been no incidents that have ever occurred. I mean, you read the article too, you were interviewed also. And so, we understand for the health, safety, and welfare of the people. And when I spoke to you a few weeks ago, Bill, I asked, the only question we really have, if you're gonna put this out there as a document, what do you have to support the reasoning for that? We all pay our own health insurance, it doesn't come in our property taxes. What does come in our property taxes is, we have to pay to maintain the roads, we just wanna ride on them with our machines that we earned the money to purchase. We're not hurting anybody. You have cars out there that violate the law, you have farm equipment that is so extremely large, and it's frightening to try and pass a piece of equipment, but we, we knew that, moving out to the country, that was part of living out in the country. We have farm, tractors...
Horses.
Horses. I know you represent a group of people that want to live in the country to keep some quiet, so where are they? They're not here today. The people that are here today, we have literally 1,000 votes here, online. You had 1,400 residents in 2010. Yes, we're not all residents here, but people that are gonna pass through the township are gonna be affected. And you're gonna tell them, "Go ahead and violate the law," because you just might not get caught, because we don't have a full-time officer to control the roads. So why put some violation out there? The opportunity. So are you aware that if there is a person that does violate Resolution 1625, as a township, you get 30% of the revenue from that $500 fine?
Goddamn, give me air, give me air.
Instead, they will get 100% of the $500 fine. So...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Say that again, honey.
I didn't catch that last thing that you said.
Instead, you will get the $500 fine to Casco Township. The county doesn't get a portion of it. So, what, how does that work on the distribution of the fine?
The old law, which was a state law...
The old law or the new law, Bill?
The old law.
We're talking about new laws. We're talking new. Like this ordinance is new. Let's talk new.
She said, under the new ordinance, when it's in today, we would get a third. Okay, then she said, "When under the old one, you get it all, we get nothing on the old."
No, the one that you're adopting, ordinance 56.
We get no, we're not gonna get...
There's a $500 fine that will be...
If we had our own police force, that could be acted. But when the county does it, no...
The county has to put in ordinance 56.
They don't have the fucking thought.
County has Resolution 1625 that you said they have before. So your ordinance indicates that it's a $500 fine.
You don't understand. By oppinion, no. We're going back to the state law. It's not a township ordinance. Sheriff does not enforce township ordinance. State law, you get your chance now. Okay. The county enforces the state law, they do not enforce township ordinance.
The case of the matter is, if somebody is actually violating the law that's already in effect by the St. Clair County Resolution 1625, you have the opportunity to have revenue to the township, right?
I read their ordinance.
And all we're doing is asking that let us follow the rules that are out there under 1625, let us ride on the roads. Be like Fort Gratchit, they're giving it a try. They were gonna opt out, just like you. We, the people that pay the taxes here, are just asking, hear our voices. I mean, this, this is step one that we have to take, come and kindly ask you not to adopt this ordinance. Now, if you want to open it up to other people, this is... We, we would love to be able to vote on it. You asked us to vote on it.
Absolutely. Yeah, Bill, that's the right way, put it up to a vote, like normal people do. Put it up to a vote.
John, let her finish.
Yeah, so, let's do this orderly. So I thank you for listening to me, and this is just something that I took a picture of social media, put it on, and said, "Wow, check this out, guys." And it just kind of started going crazy. This is something important to the people that live here. This is our pastime, we enjoy just riding the country roads.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Bill.
John.
My name's John Shoeboy. I've lived in this township 61 years. There's probably not many people in here but Billy and a couple other people like my brother-in-law, Ed, that have lived here long.
You're gonna admit that?
I've seen all kinds of things, and everything happens and changes, but what's gonna happen when you've got a 16 or an 18-year-old kid, and he's driving his four-wheeler, or his mom's Ranger? He didn't have to worry about the police before, he could wave, keep right on trucked. You're enforcing an ordinance, and now he's gonna try to outrun the cops? And guess what's gonna happen? Because he's gonna get a $500 ticket, now somebody is gonna get hurt. Has anybody been hurt in Casco Township?
No.
No? So, now let's have an ordinance, let's make sure we get it specified, let's make it a thousand violifier, so the kid could race.
No, there hasn't.
Yes, there has.
What?
Where?
What?
We had up on the air road.
Was that the sufferer faster one?
Second off, I can take a motorcycle, though. It's only two wheels, and I don't have to wear a helmet, and I can drive down these same gravel roads that you're saying that's dangerous, and they're...
With no exhaust.
Why can't we, why can't we stop some motorcyclists from coming down our dirt roads? Because they're more likely to spin out in soft gravel than a four-wheeler. I'm telling you, you enforce this law, and you're gonna see kids hurt in the hospital, because they're gonna be, the one time they're gonna try to outrun the cops, where they wouldn't have that the law wasn't in place.
Yeah, Shoeboy, yeah!
My name's Adam Rush, I live in Columbus Township, but I, I went on a four-hour ride Sunday with my wife, alright, through this town. The way the law reads is 25 miles an hour. I don't think you have a car that goes in this township down the road 25 hours an hour. And no drinking. There was probably, the cars I passed on Sunday, I guarantee they were drinking. Alright? Now, I'm not saying everybody in this room has never went over 25, but, give it a shot. I mean, let kids get out of their house, off tablets, and ride their scooters, or their bikes, or a golf cart. Maybe by the time a kid, if they start driving a golf cart at 14 or 15, by the time they drive, they won't be going 90 miles an hour down a freeway. And, you know, they get, just, give us a chance. That's, we put it to vote November. We're not valid.
Fair enough.
One thing, why can't you do that?
Okay, uh, on this type of ordinance, any vote that was ever held is only advisory only. You cannot put it in effect or take it out. That's the way the law is.
Can't take it out?
No, not by a vote. Okay, well, this, wait a minute, this was brought up before, and I didn't say it. It's already been approved.
Don't drink, Bill.
You wanna hear, you gotta calm down.
When? Because I looked through the agendas, and I looked through the minutes, and everything that was online, when this went in, when I saw this on Facebook, I could not find anything in the meetings, or anything on the agendas. Yes, I looked online at the website. I saw the ordinance on there, but there was no discussion about it. So it came out of nowhere. That's my problem. I couldn't, I...
And who brought it up?
Yeah, where was it brought up?
I mentioned when I started this, started back in '14.
In 2014, but...
So when they did approve it in '16...
Whoever lives in Casco, maybe you guys could run.
Because you just had 20 minutes on there.
You know, I looked today, why is the April agenda not on there? Why can't they go? What's in there that we can't, that we want to see?
That's the resolution. Where was it brought up before that? Is my question. That's the resolution for the ordinance, so where is the beginning, where it started from? That's what I want to know. Not the resolution, where did it start? Is my question.
I'll get it, I'll get it. You take your...
I will take care of that.
See, in this... Quiet down now.
Okay, let's try to move along.
Thanks, Bill. All I'm gonna say is this, I don't know where it all started, and it really doesn't matter, but here's, here's my big point.
Go ahead.
Sunday is my fun day with my grandsons. I have five grandsons. I stay on my own property, I ride to get, on the road to get where I'm going, I'm not going on anybody else's property. That's number one. Number two, they're all seatbelted in, we go for Sunday fun day and go look for dinosaur eggs at the roof. Is that a big thing, Bill? No, it's freaking not. To me, it is. And anybody else sitting here can tell you the same thing. It is a big thing. So who's gonna pick up the garbage out of the road? Because everyone that I see do it is on a quad. Well, all I'm saying is, I have, I have a side-by-side, and guess what? That is important to me, that's, that's important to me. We use it for our farm, we use it for a lot of different things, and I'm not riding on anybody else's property but mine. I have to maybe take Casco roads to get there, but I'm doing 25 miles an hour, because I got five little boys with me. So, you know what? You do whatever you need to do that you feel's right, but you cannot take that away from us. That is ridiculous. Well, I will put a farm dinosaur in there.
Everybody, put a farm sticker on the back of your vehicle and drive.
Sorry, Bill, that's my own opinion, and anybody that has grandkids can go there. Because those boys call every Sunday, "Grandma, are we going now?" "Yeah, we're going now."
Your piggy bank, if I want to...
That's what.
Yes, sir.
My name's Jacob Dorn, I live at Columbus, on Bluebird Lane. I'm probably the person that people don't like. I'm going to the police academy in August. So you're gonna tell me, when I graduate this police academy, I can look at all these people, and tell them, "I'm not gonna give them a ticket." You said for the last 50 years, no one's giving you a ticket, but when I show up and I pull them over, I'm gonna be the bad guy. Because everywhere else in St. Clair County can do it.
What I said was, in the past, against the law.
No, Billy, they passed it. So what? Why did you change the law, Billy? Why did you change it, when something's going good?
Anyway, it hasn't been so long, the sheriff did not vigorously enforce it. I never said they would, I never said they would.
Hold on, hold on. So for the last 50 years, you said no one's enforced it? It's, it's there?
Aggressive, you're right.
But when I go down the road in my squad car, and I see any one of these people having a good time on their Sunday fun day with their grandkids, I'm gonna pull them over and be that asshole that gives them a $500 ticket. I'm not gonna be that guy. But, if you enforce the law, I will. Because that's my job.
But it wasn't the law before, and I've seen sheriffs who have passed the ordinance.
But that's not me.
Well, why didn't you change it then, before? Why didn't you change it now? Goddamn it, get that to your face, and hold it. Why would you even have to be, if they didn't enforce it before, well, why change it?
So when I finally do graduate, in a couple months, do you want me to pull these people over or not?
I appreciate your concern.
Okay, okay. I go back to what he was saying, okay? You say, it's been that way for fifty years, we could ride them out here, okay? Well, that's fine, it is. What happens when you get in an accident with your four-wheeler with the car, and then all of a sudden he comes? You're breaking the law because you're not supposed to be out here. Instantly, you're the one at fault, because you're not supposed to be there. So then it's a whole different ballgame. But if it's legal, then it's who's right and who's wrong. Who's at fault? You're instantly at fault.
Speak up. No, speak up. I wanted to see what you wanted to say.
Somebody's gonna have to remove that.
And I can tell you that this law has been enforced in the township. My next-door neighbor received a ticket for riding his four-wheeler on the road. And that was Glen Rades. So it has been enforced in the past. I've lived out there like a second, forty-six years. Never owned a machine, probably never will own a machine. But I support everybody's right to... One last thing. Unless I'm mistaken, we elected you people to represent our thoughts. And our thoughts on that law is wrong. Okay? It's, it's not what you think we should be doing. Okay? And, uh... I would say that majority of people are voters. And I know that's, that's a threat everybody always makes, maybe someone holler, but, uh, you do have to consider that.
It's an election year, thank you.
Eddie Swire, 2018, make Casco great again.
I'd like to introduce myself, my name is Jeff Yunes, I live at 9260 Springborn. I've dreamed about living in a community like this. My brother had a beautiful piece of property in East China, and when I was coming up, going through the Let's Go apprenticeship, it was my absolute goal and dream to have some property of my own in a community like this, and share with great folks like this. I made that dream come true two years ago, when I purchased a dilapidated property that was an embarrassment to this community, and sunk sixty-five thousand dollars into making it beautiful. And it now, it is my absolute treasure and dream to be here. Part of the absolute most important reason why I'm gonna be here, and for the rest of my life don't ever want to move, is because of what this environment brings to the community, brings to the surrounding areas. It's the opportunity to teach my daughter at seven years old how to drive a clutch motorcycle. It's the opportunity to teach my son at twelve years old how to hunt in our own backyard and provide for our family when he got his first year, the first year on our property. Those are treasures that make and define us who we are. This is part of this community, is why I chose and sought you out. For a year, I drove up and down these roads begging and praying to have a house go for sale that I could afford, and that I could call my own one day. And when I got here, it was unbelievable that I got welcomed by everybody, and yet, three months later, as soon as I pulled that quad out onto the road and backed down my other driveway, because I have two driveways, I got not one, but two cops in my driveway. So for you to say that that doesn't happen and it doesn't get enforced? Our neighbors, one of the first people I met, got threatened to have their UTV towed away, because it was on my property. And she was legally doing that because there's an ORV sticker and a big triangle on the back that said she could drive it on the road. So here I am, so proud to be a part of this community, so proud to be a homeowner, so proud to put myself with the rest of you people that have been here forever, for the reasons that you've chose this community. And here I am being threatened and intimidated, that I'm not wanted because the reason why I moved here to have ATVs and teach my kids how to use them, and, and drive them safely, was pissing one of the neighbors off? Just telling you that this, I'm very proud to be here, I'm very proud to be a part of this community, but I also am very proud to be an American, where we have rights, and we have freedoms, and most of all, we could collectively come together and we could have desires that you guys have to enforce for us, because you represent us. I don't want you to have a law that says, you know what, this is a law, but we're really not gonna enforce it because it's bullcrap. I felt that enforcement, I felt that intimidation, and as a matter of fact, as a homeowner, I was asked to get up against a car and turn around, because I told the lady on my own property, I didn't want to give her my ID. That, that happened. So, this is going down the road where you say, you know what, we're gonna ignore it, we're gonna brush it onto the rug, that's not what's gonna happen. It's gonna be intimidation, it's gonna be cops that are holding this over us, and it's gonna be our kids running away scared, saying this is not the community that we want to raise our kids in, and that's, you've lost everything of what this is all about.
Oh, hang on, Billy, everybody's...
I don't want, I don't want to lose this spot. Here's what I'm gonna tell you. Out of all these people in this room, eighty percent of us are out for fun. There might be twenty percent that are doing damage, but you know what? We're not part of that, and they're not here tonight. And that's one thing you've gotta remember. I bet ninety percent of us here are out for fun. You've got ten percent that are doing damage to other people's properties, we're not. We're out for... Well, you know what? That's what is setting your little way up. There's damage to properties. We're not doing damage to properties. That's not what the ordinance is about.
Okay, we're moving on, Billy.
Hi, my name's Kendall Copenhagen, these are my daughters Peyton and Katie Copenhagen. We're, we're not new to Casco, we've known Casco, we've driven through Casco, my husband went to St. Clair, I went to Marine City. We don't use our ATV to rip up and down the road and be crazy, we use our ATV with our trailer, drive up and down the road. Adam Piper's at, has seen us drive by his house, we check for asparagus in the ditches. Like, we go down to Genshaws and say hi. There's plenty of families that, you know, that use this. We pick up trash out of the road. Who are you gonna have pick up your trash now? Because I've seen plenty of UTVs, ATVs, dirt bikes with trash bags, picking up garbage out of the ditches. Are you gonna have the county come out and do that for you? Are we gonna get prisoners on our roads now doing that? That's what I wanna know. I don't like the way this was done, I feel like it was snuck in under the rug. Not all of us get the paper. I didn't hear about it until I saw it on Facebook. That's my bigger problem with this, is that it was snuck in under the rug without any sort of public hearing or public meeting until Debbie brought it up. That's a huge problem for me. We're talking about transparency in the government right now, and it's a huge, big deal. Where was the transparency on this?
Yeah, believe me.
So then how don't people know about it? And the people that you, that you want to follow this ordinance, because I've heard the, no, I've heard the complaint of, they're loud, and they're running at 2:30 in the morning, and they're running through properties. You think they're gonna follow this ordinance? They're gonna do the same thing they've been doing, because they're still not following the county rules. They're not gonna follow your township rule.
Ladies and gentlemen...
And if you're gonna ask the sheriff to enforce it, then why don't you ask him to enforce the county's? That's my question.
Ladies and gentlemen, I've been, I've been on this board a long time. Maybe it's too long.
Maybe it's too long. Tell him, bro.
Don't talk, let him speak, come on.
Yeah. When it talked about, I've never met more dedicated, um, ser-, um, public servants here. Talking about transparency, members will come and give you the time of day to explain it. I mean, we're very...
Why is explanation now? Why is this happening now?
Yeah, we're, we're all ears right now, start explaining.
That's my question, is why is it happening now?
Bill, are you gonna listen to people?
It's always a good idea to start making smart-ass faces.
I know, but, is, is this all a waste of our time, is the question? Are you gonna consider doing this and voting not to adopt this ordinance? This is evident, this is evident with what the people...
At least has one board member, the board should reconsider. It's a honor to live in a township where you have all this population coming and saying, we wanna be law-abiding citizens, that's all we wanna do. I think we've gotta hear that and talk about this more. What we're dealing with is something that's been done, it's already done.
I wanna know what it's gonna take to rescind this ordinance, since it's already been passed and approved and all that. You guys know the rules of the country, so set us up, and now this gets rescinded.
We didn't adopt anything. We just stuck with the state law as it has existed for a long time. St. Clair County adopted something, and the township was given the opportunity to opt out of it. And stayed with the state law, that's all we did. We felt that the county was giving us the ordinance. If we adopted it, we had no way to enforce it at all.
We don't need the fancy politician talk, we want straight talk.
No change. We didn't have the way to enforce it before, nor now. So we stayed with the state law as it existed.
You're beating around the bush, answer the question. What needs to be done to get rid of it?
Can I, do you like riding your golf cart?
Rescind it.
Come on, quiet down, so, gray shirt.
I cannot go, if this ordinance goes into effect on, what, Saturday, I believe? Next, like three days from now, four days from now, whatever it is. I can't go in the winter, follow my father-in-law's driveway, without possibly getting a ticket. And there's a lot of guys in here, I know he can't do it, I know there's other guys in here that go do it all the time. They will not be able to help any. You know, you know, there's another, another thing that I found interesting. Right now, I'm making an addendum to opt it. I know you guys can, I've seen it done in Elgin Act when I used to live there. They opted out of ordinance enforcement on fifteen different ordinances, that said you couldn't park in your grass, you couldn't have a boat in your yard, you couldn't have a RV in your property, and guess what? Elgin Act's a voting community, everybody's got a vote. And this happened right at the township hall, or, sorry, the city office. The next day, no more enforcement of that twenty-five-year-old ordinance. Overnight, it changed. So it can be adopted right now and voted on, and we can opt right back in to follow along with the county.
Well, what do you think about his statement, Billy?
Hey, you know something I find interesting, is that this law takes effect, the way I understand it, it takes effect on the same day that a main complainer sitting up there at that table, I'm not gonna mention no names, happens to have a wedding going on at their house, I kinda find that coincidental. Yeah, hear, hear. That's something I understand, uh, we'll wait till the weekend and see if it happens, but...
Excuse me, I do have a wedding going on, and the only reason...
The law takes effect, it happens to be the same day. I guarantee you, if I go by there on my bike, there'll be cops riding the area.
I don't think so. But, but, wait a second, wait a second. You came in here, all as neighbors.
That's right.
I've known you for twenty-five years.
You don't know me, but I know your husband. Lived here for six, but I've been around here for thirty-five.
Well, and so have I, and so have I. And so, are you telling me that as a, as a neighbor...
Why is the law getting pointed back to you?
That's how he talks.
There's not supposed to be any personal attacks.
I didn't make it personal until she spoke up and she made it direct to her. Nobody knew what was...
Who else in this, who else in this room is son is getting married in their yard?
Alright, I just wanna say, my family has lived here since nineteen sixty-two. A lot of the people that are in this community are family members. They may live the next door, they may live a half a mile or a mile down the road, and they may live in East China where Casco comes up to it. I know a person that's on the Richmond township, they adopted the ordinance, and now there's a little speed trap there, and the cop gets the township next to it that doesn't have the ordinance, but of course, they have to come onto the abutting township, that it is illegal. And the cops sit there and purposely know that they have to come that way to go home, and they get them. But what I wanna say is, again, family lives one house away, a mile away. I think it's a shame that we have to get in our vehicles to go down to their house, where a group of kids and an older sixteen-year-old or whatever, take the whole family down there, because the barbecue's gonna be in ten minutes. I think it's a shame that we're gonna put this into force, because the people that are being complained about, drag racing, loud noises, they are still gonna be the ones doing it, but yet you take it away from the people that...
And they're still breaking the law, they can still be taking...
They have thousands of dollars sitting out in this parking lot, I bet you there's like $200,000 worth of equipment.
Way more.
I don't even have one of these vehicles. All I'm saying is that the people have invested in the property here, they have invested in their off-road vehicles, they've invested a lot to live in this community, and to come in and say, you can't take that $20,000 vehicle three houses down, keep it on your five-acre lot. It's, it's just totally unfair, and we might as well just all throw our keys away, because who wants to sit on five acres with these beautiful vehicles sitting out here in the driveway?
Some Russian.
I've heard it said multiple times that you guys were all elected as a representation of the community and of us. Can I just ask the entire board, how many of you guys actually have an ORV?
Quiet down. I had an ORV before you were born. I had an ORV before you were born. Okay, moving on, you're looking at this one.
I have heard that the day that you guys voted on this, that this wasn't even on the agenda. It was, it was a meeting about ditches and the drainage and stuff like that.
Let's just vote on it today.
No, John, sit down, let everybody go first. Lady...
Hey, Bill? I just graduated high school. I learned in my government class that your job as an elected official is to be the voice of the people. And how many people here are very unhappy about the choices you are making to represent them? The only thing I wanna agree on is the fact that one of you owns an ORV, and that's neither here nor there. But I've spent many weekends since I've moved here, enjoying a trip on a golf cart or a four-wheeler. I'm broke, not causing destruction, not breaking rules, not wishing to harm anybody. I've also grown up my entire life fearing breaking a rule or breaking the law, for that $500 fine, or whatever it may be. And so I believe that all the people here are telling you that they don't want to be opted out of this ordinance, that maybe you should listen to them, because that is your job.
Why move along, Billy? Let's just end the meeting and adopt the ordinance, and we're not gonna do it. Why move along and keep prolonging the meeting? Goddamn, can you imagine that? If I'm on a job site with him?
Ryan Ford. I lived on Starville Road, growing up through high school.
I lived on Starville Road growing up through high school, and now I live on Springborn Road in Casco, not in Vulcanville. I love the Vulcan. But I have to go plow my grandma's driveway during the winter. I also have to go cut wood for her in the winter and in the summertime. You're telling me that now I have to take my four-wheeler, my wood splitter, all my equipment loaded all up in my trailer, which it doesn't fit, plus the little trailer that I have to have to drive through the woods, so now I'm pulling two trailers, all three houses, or six houses down, just to go help my grandmother. I plow that driveway. But I might not get caught, so it might not be a big deal. But, not only that, people around here don't know where this township borders are. Now you're going to have to put signs up on all the intersections where the Casco Township starts that says you can't ride your ORV vehicle here. But you might get caught. So you've got to put up all these signs, so now we're going to spend some extra money to put up all these signs so that way people know that they can't ride here. Are you going to keep it a secret to let people know where our borders are? It's no different than having a moped or a motorcycle or any other two-wheel vehicle, a pro rocket that rides down any other regular road. It's no different. They're just the same safety features as we have on our bikes. And we actually have to wear the helmets! And goggles, and all the safety equipment. There's no reason to have this ordinance adopted. Opt in to the St. Clair County ordinance. You can do it, I know you can.
Casco is a small, country town, and I believe their frontages to build here is quite large on, it's a small city, right? It's a lot, okay? It's a small, country town, and we all live here because of it. And this ordinance goes against why we all live here. There's nothing better than after a hard day's work, not by your career, but working around your lives. And I have a real hard time accepting the fact that a minuscule percentage is making the rules for the majority of the absentee voter. The color, the freedom of information. Who brought it to make use?
What?
Who brought it to the man unit?
Maywell was on April, he did.
Okay, so it was on April, who scored? Who introduced it?
What you guys are missing, what you guys are all complaining behind them, he said it's the right thing to do. He said that it's on the docket because it's the right thing to do. Every time you guys cheer, somebody says it under his breath.
Somebody put it on, make your case. He then just mysteriously sneaks through your envelope holder.
When this was approved by the county last fall...
You're back talking, Billy. Now he's asking you a question. Who put it on the docket?
When the county approved it, they said they were going to...
He's got to raise your hand, come on. Good, he's asking a direct question and you're back talking, Billy.
Want to hear something? You got to be quiet, sir. My troops get tired of it. When the county approved this in October, I think it was, they said that they were going to come up with language that a township could use, so I'm telling you. That went all the way till back in March and April, I kept calling, they said no language. Came to the board in April, I said, "You want to do it?" They said yes, so I had the board draw up the language for the ordinance, and in May it was approved.
Who did, Billy? We're asking, it's rocket scientists, he asked you a question, ask, answer Jerry Keller. You didn't, you beat it around the bush. Who started it? Why did? Do you think, oh, Billy started it, I didn't know that.
He said in the beginning, they've been thinking about this since two thousand and fourteen. So this isn't something that they just decided last night, it's been on their minds for three years. They just enacted it when the county, is what he's trying to tell you, that it's been on their mind for three, two and a half years. They finally enacted it now. I'm just saying what they...
Yeah, somebody wanted to change it in fourteen and you said no.
You find out where they live, and you see the ones that got the dirt bikes of oil riding around their house, that's going to answer your question. I don't want to point no more fingers, but I...
He won't answer that.
Kurt, my name is Kurt Sodan, I am actually the new, I'm the new owner of the eater bar. And I don't own an ATV, okay? I've never owned an ATV, and I don't drive around on the roads with an ATV, but I will tell you one thing, I got a lot of customers coming to my bar, probably fifty or so a week. Already got a bridge, left a mile from my bar, closed down, sucks down one of the main arteries coming to town, already putting a bang on my business. Now you're going to not let anybody drive their ATVs and come to the bar either? How's everybody supposed to get there? Just like, you know, I just bought the business a year ago, and I come and see stuff like this, it's just like, it seems like, it seems like it's, you're not trying to help the businesses.
Then are you going to have dust, any of the drivers at your bar?
No different than driving a car. Fish and chip Fridays!
Hang on, let's move on, yes sir.
Bill, what expert opinion or expert experience or qualification of this award to determine that these machines out here are unsafe?
Probably as much as the county commissioner's head to say that.
These machines out here are built to state specification. Now, why, now why all of a sudden are you guys sitting there unsafe? You said it already. What? No, they're not. The state, if the state wouldn't allow...
I have pavement, we don't have any pavement. Fucking retard. Bridges, we got pavement on the bridges. Boy, that, I will go out of our yard on honeycomb road and some watch.
Does this board have anything like that? Comes with their belt?
Oh, it's a washboard.
I don't think, I don't think the county is going to sign a stupid ordinance to let these people ride their four-wheelers. I don't think so. But that's basically what they're saying right now. That you want to stop? So, my question to you, Bill, in the board, is what expert qualification do you have? Where is that at? Would you like to make a motion, please, without recognizing the Robert rules? Common sense.
Hang on.
Would like to make a motion under Robert rules?
Listen, this is an open part of the discussion where everybody gets to speak.
I'm Tyler, I'm at three six zero one Nodrum. Been living here for about two years now, and, thanks, so you guys are taking my ability to go plow my grandparents' driveway, they're seventy, eighty years old. You expect them to go walk outside and plow their own damn road, their driveway? And think, how many lives have died when they're doing that? You know what's happening? You know what's happening? So now, it's been my fault because of this ordinance? Because I can't go out there and do, do it for them? Because it's my responsibility to help them out because they have helped me out throughout my entire childhood.
Okay, thank you.
Hang on, I want to give everybody a first chance. Did you speak before?
I did, but I want to speak for everyone here. Let's put the questions and let's ask Bill how we get this amended, or make an amendment.
Okay, I think I told this before. The only way you can change this is by board action.
Here in the board.
And that would require a resolution-type setup and all that stuff. It's not going to happen tonight, I'll tell you that.
Can we make a motion to have you consider it? Can we make a motion to have you table it for now and consider it and we can all go home in the turntable?
It's already in place, there's nothing to table.
Can we, we need to have you make a motion that you will revisit this. Who on the board voted for this?
I never heard anything about it, of course.
Can your people talk, Bill? What are your people telling you? You could do this.
Yeah, the board's even on, I think she knows. She don't know what she's talking about.
Ladies and gentlemen...
I see who has the iron fist.
Ladies and gentlemen, the supervisor, there's actually a procedure we have to follow.
I get that.
This can be done.
But there's got to be something you can do for that next Saturday, we just can't down, we just can't ride and then... Put it on the agenda and table it too.
You can't ride your golf cart no more. Quiet down now.
Let's hear what the iron fist is trying to do here behind the...
What's up?
Will you be quiet? I'll try to get this thing changed. We cannot do anything tonight. But what we can do is make another resolution rescinding this one.
Very good.
It won't be before Saturday, so Saturday is likely to be...
Special meeting. Special meeting.
That's right. Hang on, hang on, hang on. Even, even if by some reason you had a special meeting, every candidate, you would have to publish it in the paper, and that would take thirty days.
That's fine.
I can do that. What a three-ring circus in this fucking acre board I call it. This is called, this is called a King Ruko court. You know what a King Ruko court is? Yeah, huh?
Do you understand how serious it is? Because, we, if we have to wait until the next election or if we have to do recalls, there's enough people here that can fill board seats here. And it's not, I don't mind yourself, but there are people here tonight that feel they have to answer it about it.
I wanted to answer a question, but it keeps getting louder.
I thought you said the board is what they want to do.
What we could do tonight, and I said basically, before we wrap up here, I will ask the board if they want me to work on language to the fact of either altering or revoking or...
We want to rescind it.
Let them talk! Hey, let them talk! Let them talk!
Repeal, revote, if the board says work on the language, then the next meeting, it'll be on the agenda and... If, if, if that were to happen...
Listen, listen.
If that were to happen, it would be put in the paper, and then it would take effect thirty days after we rescind it.
Can you notify the sheriff to not enforce law until then?
I have no influence on the sheriff.
Tell them it's under review.
I think that you could write a letter to St. Clair Sheriff saying that we have not decided whether we're opting in or opting out. There'll be no enforcement until we meet again.
You know? They do too.
Alright, so the law goes, the ordinance goes effect on the seventeenth, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so nobody here wants it, so why don't you pick five people to be the advisory committee to work with you to rescind this thing? Pick five of the residents to work with you to change the law, to change the ordinance the big way we want. That way the boards work with five of us. Why not? It can be done, you can do that. We're, after all, we're the residents, this is what we want, and this is the way it should be done. You guys working with us, what we want done.
People say they want to revote. You don't need advisory, revote.
But are you going to do that?
You're working with a committee, you're working with a committee, correct.
But if he's going to just say no...
They can work with a committee, and that way we can report back. Yes, sir. It's obvious to me that the board has heard what you said and heard it loudly, and we're going to reconsider. That's what we're going to do.
You imagine if these fucking...
We're going to do this. So for thirty days, we're going to be...
Thirty, it's going to be sixty.
It's going to be sixty.
It'll be ninety. Can you take the vote, drafting a letter to the same board? I still have, I still have the floor. I still have the floor. Please, we can't get anything done like this. If you want to get something together, let's form a committee of five to meet with them, to work out the progress. We can't, we're not going to get nothing, this is like a mob, we're not going to get nothing done. If you want to change it, work with them, and that way you got watchdogs watching what they're doing.
I just want to be sure that we don't have any intimidation for the next sixty days until it settles.
They don't need a committee, they're offering to do, to rescind it.
Well, we, that's what they're saying, we want to make sure.
Not if they do it, we want confirmation.
So, how do you think we will? You've never had one for anything. So you can help.
You can. Why? Why? The people are asking for it, why would you?
They need to clean up the whole mess.
That's a great idea. I thought I lost Peter something. Thought you didn't see me. And you know, you probably denied it, but two weeks before they put this in a St. Clair County law into effect, I asked you, I said, "Is that going to pass?" You said, "No way in Casco." You kind of laughed about it. You already got that in your head. Everything up there that these people is talking about, and you're saying, "Nope." Your mouth's going, but you don't even know what's going on. Amen to that, brother!
Can we have a show of board hands on who would vote on the repealing of this so we know who to vote out? Why not?
Why did you say it takes three to six weeks to get it in the paper? When you cloak, it's in the next day.
And you're not the president!
They don't want to know in their business, that's why they don't want to buy it.
Put it in the paper, they expect it thirty days after we rescind it.
Quiet, hey, everybody, quiet down! We got a couple board members asking...
Billy, you're digging deep.
Getting out of control.
I have one thing I'd like to say. You know, can I show you something?
Let's start board talk.
There's something that's not being heard here. Before this, before the board did this, there were other voices that said different about how they... Other voices that we heard that weren't saying what you're saying, were saying that they had a problem with the ordinance. Or how board was saying that there's only one side to this. We think here's the strongest side, and I can't, most persuasive, but they heard the voices that were loudest heard when we did this.
Hang on. Hang on, who has not spoken?
I understand that we're hearing a lot of voices.
You imagine doing this?
Then I think we should go with what this gentleman said. You put it in there, and you say that we have not decided yet, so the law... You put it in there, and you say that we have not decided yet, so the law does not pass and nobody can get taken until we make our decision.
You must be able to do something.
Or have to be able to write a letter to the St. Clair Police, period, hundred percent.
It's not that hard to do when you know you guys can do it.
We can.
And you're rolling your eyes.
Their jurisdiction in our community is your authority. You have authority over them because we hire them. Oh, you don't pay them? You don't pay St. Clair County Sheriff? So you have no police presence in Casco, Kansas?
Sure.
Cause you voted on how many murders you have. Your taxes paid. Our taxes paid.
Our taxes should call them.
Quiet. Quiet.
Listen to the board for a minute, please. Everybody will be emotional about a special meeting.
Make the board schedule a special meeting.
Everybody wants to have a special meeting.
May I have one point of clarification on the ordinance first? My name is Dr. Bill Fish, I'm from multiple properties in Casco. Live on Church Road. I was just looking over the state's website on ordinances in the thirty day posting rule. Section four, part A says if an ordinance imposes sanction, which your original ordinance does, it requires thirty day posting on your state, which you've already stated. However, it does not impose a sanction, which repealing this would not impose a sanction because it removed it. It only, it takes place one day after being posted in any of the sections, right here in part B. Section four, part two, subsection B says if an ordinance does not impose a sanction for the violation of an ordinance, which we're moving, would not impose any sanction, the ordinance shall take effect the day following the date of the publication of the ordinance or any following date of publication.
That's a good one.
If it's repealing a sanction.
If it hasn't already been in effect.
You vote now.
It just goes to status quo.
That's all we needed, good, good guy like you. Knows, knows a lot. Hey, they let this through with him. Billy.
Quiet. Quiet down. Quiet.
I wanna make motion right here and now. We will have a special meeting for this ordinance.
Greatest meeting.
Wait.
What day? We have to figure out.
Tomorrow.
Quiet down.
Alright. We want to review the ordinance with the idea of re, of sealing it at a special meeting.
Vivian, seven days?
No, it can't be held tonight.
The journey and the real.
It has to be. Both have to have it posted.
Two weeks.
Twenty-four hours. Eighteen hours.
Eighteen hours. That's good.
Tomorrow, same time. Quiet.
So you know, sir, I need a second for my mouth to.
You got it.
Alright. Nobody on this board, pardon me, trying to make life harder, wants to make life harder than anybody in this county.
Resolution, just rescind it.
Yeah, just rescind it.
Come on, don't try to make it harder than it is. For who else don't you have nothing to say?
As for his mouth, can I live here?
Lose a lot.
We got, we need only four. We only need four, right?
Can't be four on Saturday.
Well, I gotta double check on that, and go ahead and draw for a rest.
What's that?
Quiet, guys, listen to them. Let's put a tentative in the meeting to be this Thursday at seven o'clock.
Why tentative? Why tentative? Hold on, hold on.
When, uh, you think for this, this will be soon, um, get clarification on this matter?
That's two days.
Yeah. No, Bill, we're being named there, Lee. Come on, just go with that. We're being named there.
We gotta do, Billy, plant beans or what? Yeah, you're right.
We only need four. And there's four right here that'll make it. They don't have to.
I'll help you.
Tell you what, we the people.
Got a lot of help, Billy.
If you get something done by Thursday, that shit gets done. So, I think we're telling you, you better get it done.
Yeah, you gotta move on.
Quiet down.
Bill can't be at that meeting.
That's a good thing. That's a real good thing, but go on.
But we can put on the nineteenth. But, now wait a minute.
You need majority votes on the board. Majority there.
On the nineteenth, and it says that within the eighteen hours, we have to be able to post it, so.
Is that meeting open to the public then?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. And what he says that it would.
Hey, quiet, guys.
Quiet.
It would be the day after it's in the paper.
Alright, then it would be revoked the day after we get it in the paper, which probably the soonest we could get it in the paper would be the twenty-first.
That'd work.
I'm sorry, I don't agree hard. The twenty-eighth, the quickest it could get in the paper.
That'd work.
Thank you, the board, really.
Thank you.
Nineteenth at seven, right?
Monday.
Monday, seven o'clock.
Guys, be here. Be here.
You got a question?
We'll buy more people next time.
Look your way up here. You guys, like, the meeting is gonna happen, you're gonna go back to you.
I'm coming, I'm coming, bro.
I gotta work, I gotta work on Monday too. What you think it'll be?
I mean, I can, I don't care. July first. July first. It's for these people out.
There is a motion on.
On July first.
There is a motion that I think, under old business, that needs to be voted on. My motion is for us to review the ordinance as it is written and probably.
With idea?
With idea of repeal. And then you support it then.
And this will be for Monday?
The, the nineteenth of seven o'clock. Then I can, I can do that.
Okay. Being supported?
Yes.
Okay, movement supported. We have a special meeting Monday at seven P.M. Is there anything more to the motion? I know you stared for that, but.
No, we got it. She's got it all.
Okay. Is there any discussion? You're not a call for a vote.
Well, I think this was a little, almost on fire, but the trash, uh.
Oh, this was better. I think this is, I, you know what?
Alright.
Good, good point.
I'd just like to say for the record, that, listen to all these folks. All they wanna do is be law-abiding citizens, doing what they love to do. They don't wanna do it illegally.
Right.
They wanna do it legally and they wanna do it by the law. How can you not support that?
Well, the only thing that I, what I voted for, because we still have full-time business. If we get that, I would have voted for it, yeah.
But it doesn't matter either way. We still not have police to enforce the other on.
But if you call nine-one-one, the St. Clair County Sheriff, you don't get it. Well, we just don't have that game road patrol.
Okay. We wanna vote on this.
Okay, we gotta vote. Movement supported, no discussion, call for a vote, always in favor.
Aye.
Motion for it.
Bye, guys. Alright. Alright.
Alright.
Payment of the bill.
Payment of bills, always a good idea. If there are any questions on the bills, I will move may be paid.
I support that. Movement supported to pay the bill. Is there any discussion? You're not a roll call vote?
Probably would do that.
I got it.
Roll call, Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat? Aye. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion for it. Citizens comments.
Anybody trying to make any comments?
No comments?
No comments?
I don't think you had much choice.
Mister?
I thank you folks for the great job on this earth. It's a no-win situation, so I applaud you. You know, I felt old tonight, however, everyone of you, just kind of put it out of your mind and relax and, um, enjoy the evening because you did the right thing.
Oh, thank you. Certainly, when I talk, you are.
Hey?
Yeah. Anything else?
The only question I had was, it cuts back into Mr. Neal, I was all table and ready. But, uh, over the last few years, all I've heard about, like, Misenar, church or the county roads, just have no jurisdiction over them. Whether it's gravel, grading, no matter whatever happens, call the county, call the county. What happens with this ordinance that's in place if they're caught on that road? Who's jurisdiction?
They fall under the same as the rest of them.
Yeah, but I mean, everything else goes to the county. See, that's a misunderstanding I get all the time. But every time something comes up about them two roads, we'll go talk to the county. You just all pass it off.
Yeah, that's a maintenance issue.
No matter what it is. No matter what comes up.
Yeah, but may, when you talk about go to county, they're.
I have not, I'm not trying to complain, I'm just trying to have an understanding.
But every road in the township, except grass, it is a county road.
Right, but when it, when you, but, uh, the ones that are maintained by the county are Misenar.
But they're all county roads, only some are classified as local roads.
Which is, which you so I say, there's no, you have no obligation or anything comes up through whatever happens on them, we'll talk to the county. I've heard it over the last few years.
But in the county's ordinance, it said that if you opt out over, you know, the county roads in the township.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it seems like there's some confusion there for the ordinance, that's all I meant.
Yeah, we, we don't get no report from the sheriff department how, where they pull people over.
Yeah, I know. I understand.
It's a local, um, is a general law township, all we deal is land use issues. That's our function here. Law enforcement, like we, we said, we don't have a full-time police force.
Well, I live on a very vocal corner over there with a by dock and that, because all the motorcycles, everybody else likes to, you know, let it dance, you know, and go around the corner and. And I, I, I run one myself. My kids, over the last fifty years, have done it. But we're all staying in our property, but maybe go from here to the farm and that's it. But there's a lot of them here who are from out of the township. So I understand your obligations, and it's a, it's a rough one.
Yeah. It's not easy.
No, I understand that.
That was something.
Cause I, I have no idea.
You know, I'm doing a park there on the Long Bell River.
I have no, I have no, I have no idea who's going by and raising a hole and this and that, you know.
We don't know.
Aye.
And I'm not the only one, I'm sure.
Okay, anybody else? I just have concerns about unintended consequences in this town itself.
Yeah, but you know, they, they had some very valid.
Very, yes.
They did.
I mean, kids, people there are helping, there are elderly people.
Right, I mean.
Oh, yeah, but that, you know, that's, it, it's, what was it that the one person said about? If there's an accident.
Right.
A law wheelchair in there.
I think he's a hundred percent wrong on that one.
Well, yeah, but it, but it, but there's consequences. It's something to consider.
Yeah.
And, and just like gun laws. And, and just like gun laws, okay? We'll, we'll say gun laws. You can pass all the gun laws you want.
You're not gonna stop everybody from being hurt.
And people's stop laws are gonna do what they're gonna do. Just like ninety-nine percent of the people who ride on the roads everywhere are courteous, respectful, et cetera, et cetera. It's that three percent that are going, "Rr-rrrr."
It's not, it's not gun laws, it's gun responsibility. And I'd like to see, when the Second Amendment is violated, harsher penalties for that.
Well, and that's, oh, but, but you're right, you cannot, you should not, I, you should not penalize the greater mass for the irritation that less than five percent of the kids that just happen to ride right right kind of my house all the time. But, what are you gonna do?
I think, Bill, this board, if we had, the sheriff's department had dedicated road patrol all the time, we would have passed that ordinance.
Oh, sure, but we, but we don't.
Yeah, we don't.
You know.
We're limited.
You know, the point about insurance, I think, is a big one, because most of the folks here are gonna ride in a law-abiding way. But if, with the ordinance that we adopted, they get in an accident, they have a lot more problems than they really should encounter.
And that, yeah, that's what she was saying. That, that really, that started me to think about that.
Doing something illegal and something bad happens, and it's a lot worse than if you're doing something legal and something accidentally bad happens.
Well, yeah.
So, that was kind of persuasive for me.
For me, it was.
Yeah, and the motor transportation, motor, personal transportation is changing. You know, they're saying like those, those gator, John here, gators, they're twenty grand.
What it was really hard to say is that there are other voices that have had a lot of problems with ORVs on their property. They might be small and isolated, but they get intense.
Yes, I know.
People running over their crops.
I know, yes, and that's...
Keeping them up all night, and all other kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
But those voices were admirers when we did them.
Right. And, but you know, just like the, the three percent that drive me crazy at eight-thirty at night when, you know, I'm trying to wind down my day, and that's where they seem to start. That, that's more of a nuisance call than if we're weak. And, and then you, you do, you call the police. You just say, "This, this, these people have been up and down my road for a breast, for, you know, forty minutes, fifty minutes, how much of this do I have to put up with?"
And my rooster's crowing.
Yeah, and my dog's bark.
You know, some people really have a problem with that.
But, I, I think, um...
Not my league, but...
But, you know, and I, I think, you know, they brought good points, but I think, you know, they wanted us to do action right away, but we have to...
Well, they have to understand how the law works. Government does not work that quickly.
Well, they wanted to know what the process was, and that wasn't forthcoming. And that was very frustrating for me as a resident sitting here. People want an answer, and they want to get...
It's only three times, only the board can do it.
Yeah, but you didn't tell them how.
I did it twice.
No, you didn't.
I did it.
I think it did. That's over the...
I think they greatly...
They weren't listening to that, they were listening...
They greatly exaggerated.
We want it now, we're tomorrow.
The sheriff's enforcement of...
No government works that way.
Yeah, well, that's, but this is a society. I want information, I go online, and boom, it's right there. So this is, I mean...
Yeah, it's a right-now society.
And I talked to some of the people, they understood, you know.
I think everyone was very appreciative that you are going to, well, I think, they think that it's a done deal.
Correct. Well, you know, we are a representative of the people. And if these people will be respectful of their neighbors...
Yeah, and they are all neighbors. We're really, in this township, we're all.
But, you know, but not everybody in the neighborhood has an ORV. You know what? Some of us have...
I'm the only one up here that does.
No, I don't, I, I, you know.
No, but that's okay, Patty, you respected your peers and your votes.
Right.
Maybe some good people are interested, local government will come forward out of this.
Well, that's what I would like. Wouldn't it be nice if, if five of them came to the annual meeting? If they came to the budget meeting?
Well, no, just got interested in participating.
And planning commission, and, you know, wouldn't that be nice?
We need more people to do that.
You were at the big meeting.
This meeting here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they were standing, I saw them standing.
We sat in the corner back there with people all in front of us.
Oh, yeah.
Are there any more?
No, I'm, no, I'm, I'm fine, I've got stuff to do.
I make a motion to adjourn, people.
Movement supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
I am.
State adjourn.
It is eight-thirty.
Yeah, that was good.